The public hearing.
Second.
Roll call.
Susan, serious?
Yes.
Justin Jones?
Yes.
Michael Levy?
Yes.
Lauren Campbell?
Yes.
Lisa Hunter?
Yes.
Item three A, approve resolution number twenty twenty five twenty eight, a resolution approving and adopting the annual city of Windsor Heights operating budget for fiscal year twenty five twenty six.
Still moved.
Second.
Uh, any discussion amongst council? Okay. Hearing none, roll call.
Susan?
Yes.
Justin Jones?
Yes.
Michael Levy?
Yes.
Lauren Campbell?
Yes.
Yes.
Item four, public forum, this is the time set aside for comments from the public on topics of city business other than those listed on the agenda, no action may be taken. Please come to the podium, state your name and address for the record and keep your comments to no more than five minutes. Good. Uh, consent agenda.
Second.
Can I just ask a question? I apologize, I got a, an email later today that I didn't get to respond to. So they questioned the employment group, like, um, they asked if we had a, if I knew what the part-time person was doing and I-
Oh, QPS?
Um, Allison Hankins.
Allison, yes, Allison's helping us do some of the scanning onto Laserfish. Uh, we've had a couple of temporary people come and go as budgetary is allowed to try to get all of our old resolutions, ordinances, city council minutes and agendas onto Laserfish, get them properly stored and documented. So she's been working with us for a couple of months on that.
I just didn't have a real answer for them. And so I said I'd ask and with all that was going on today, apologize, I didn't get it out earlier. So, other than that, that's, that was the only question.
Any other questions or discussion? Hearing none, roll call.
Yes.
Justin Jones?
Yes.
Michael Levy?
Yes.
Lauren Campbell?
Yes.
Yes.
Um, six A is discuss reimagined DART. I believe Amanda is supposed to be here.
No.
Nope.
No?
No, just us.
Oh. Okay, you discuss reimagining.
We let the DART team know that we thought we could handle having the conversation.
Okay.
I'm glad you have faith in us. Look at that.
I have faith in you always. Mostly because Lauren's in charge. Alright, so you have before you, um, format that will show you a little bit about what we're talking about. So what we have to come up with by the end of this discussion is direction for me to take back to the commission on where we want to go in the spectrum of ridership to coverage. And I'll talk about that in a second. And then if we want to go with the status quo budget, or if we want to, uh, work on a reduced budget. Um, Lauren and I have had this discussion. We know where we stand. We, we know what we, we, the two of us believe, but want to get input. All the councils are having, um, input discussions because we've, we've been told as a commission, we should come back with kind of the support and approval of our councils. As you know, that there's been times when people have said that they did not necessarily, were not acting with the approval of the full council. So we're gonna all make sure that we have those conversations with our councils. Um, so what you see on the front is our existing transit network where we have one really frequent route that you'll see there in red. Uh, you'll see that most of the time we have early morning and peak afternoon hours where there's a little bit more frequency, but otherwise it's a longer wait time, twenty to sixty minutes, depending on where you're going. And you can see the full range of where service currently exists, um, including where we can, um, we do some on-demand. So what we're looking at is knowing that there is a spectrum of need and desire in terms of service. Uh, oftentimes the trade-off is discussed as frequency or ridership versus coverage. And so if you open up to the middle two pieces here, on the left you'll see the ridership concept. So you'll see, um, we've reduced the number of routes here. It's condensed, uh, closer into, um, the core of the city. You'll see a lot more red. So that means there's a lot more frequency moving people throughout, um, the network, uh, with some blues on the tail end. So uh, imagined, you know, the timing would be such that those routes would get people into the red and then the red would move them more frequently across, um, the different routes in the center of the downtown area and then out through the core, um, and moving pockets of people. So the ridership concept is about moving, those of you who were not at the, the workshops, it's about moving people from centers where they're gonna be shopping or working or going to appointments to areas where there might be people living, right? And so population centers to population centers is where we're, we're trying to go with ridership. So higher frequencies also mean that people can depend on being able to use the bus more in a, uh, timely fashion. So a more of a commuter style. Um, and so we're trying to reduce then the number of routes. So you have more frequency in a more concentrated area. But you're gonna lose coverage by doing that, right? And so some of the people, uh, who live further out will have to have different means to get into the system. Um, and we can talk about what those means might be, whether it be some sort of microtransit, so using Uber or using a shuttle service or something else to get them to the network. Um, but that's, uh, that would be a follow-on to this concept.
So how much would that cost?
It would-
How, what would that?
It would depend on what the final design looks like in terms of where you're trying to get people to, um, and where that is.
So is that even feasible for people that, you know, are, are taking the bus that are maybe working at, say, Walmart, Hy-Vee, uh, you know, those essential jobs that is that, would that be feasible in their financial means? Or are we going to exceed their financial means?
Right. So the, the hope would be that what's designed then would be a part of that larger transit conversation. So the microtransit then would be a part of the DART overall coverage. So it just wouldn't be a DART bus, but it would be a, uh, a service that DART would be a part of, or the cities would be a part of to then create that connectivity back to the main line. So not necessarily a lot more for the individual rider.
Okay.
Uh, if they're further, say they're out in North Johnston, right? Trying to get them to then that line to then get them this way. So it wouldn't be bringing them into the core, be getting to the, to the closest node.
And would that add a lot of time on to their day for? Do we know that yet?
We don't know that yet. So the way the concepts work, um, is that they, what they, the, um, the team can map for us is then if you're here, then this is the number of things you can get to within X number of minutes.
Okay.
And so they're able to kind of overlay that depending on where you're looking at on service line or where businesses are or vice versa.
Why does the ridership concept show service to Pleasant Hill?
Pleasant Hill is currently still a part of the conversation until they're not.
They have another year, is it? Another two?
It's another year.
Yep, it'll be June thirty, twenty twenty six.
And Susan, to your point on the time that, um, somebody who maybe is, is using a blended mode to get, or you know, to connect into the DART network, um, the, the advantage with the more frequent buses is that if the timing of some sort of shuttle or something brings them to the stop as the bus is pulling away, that it's a shorter wait time for the next one to come around. Um, you know, not quite the, you know, so often you don't even notice line from, uh, Blues Brothers, but, um, uh, frequently enough that, um, it's not going to totally throw off somebody's day.
But Mike, it doesn't go all the way in, just goes to that little part of university. But yes.
So under the ridership concept, we'd, Route three would increase to fifteen minutes or better?
Well, we're, I mean, for, for, for us, if we're actually looking at what Route three does, Route three doesn't change very much for us in either concept. But again, we're talking about the, the entire network.
I understand.
Right, right.
Yeah, we're in a fortunate position as a city that either concept or some blend of the two concepts, um, our residents and our businesses here that people are traveling to, um, shop at are not going to be negatively impacted. I think that we will, will be in a, a strong position.
Now, once you leave us, if you're on the ridership section, you see that it's still a fifteen-minute line all the way out to Valley West Mall. That would be different under coverage. It would stop and then become a longer wait going west. So if we pop over to coverage, coverage would take into account all of the member communities and giving some bit of service to all of them. And you'll see there where the Pleasant Hill microtransit zone is, um, to the east. So this would then, um, spread out, thin out, I would think, the, the coverage, but hit something for everyone in the metro who are part of the DART commission. Um, your frequency increases there. So most, they'll say, uh, most routes there arrive every thirty to sixty minutes. So there's much longer waits here. Folks aren't necessarily doing um, a lot of commutes. Uh, and if they are, then it's taking a lot of their time to, to do that unless they're in the core.
See, there's a stop at Polk County Jail, which is kind of nice.
Yeah.
Compared to them walking.
But it comes like, I think maybe three times or four times a day.
Yeah.
Not very frequent.
That's one of the main gripes you hear.
Mm-hmm.
So. And the other one, it shows maybe it's a little bit further away. It's a little bit of a walk.
Yeah. But you're looking at the-
I mean, like-
The lines. Got it.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yep.
Us comparison, about the same.
Yeah. Yeah, so-
We're gonna use the same budget.
Same budget that we're gonna decide, right? That's a follow-up, uh, to do either one of these things. Um, and so the question becomes, what do we believe is the best route to take philosophically for the, the metro community?
Airfield. Where, where is the bulk of your ridership coming from? In relationship to downtown or suburbs?
So do you remember this on the map, Lauren, where?
Yeah, obviously it shifted a lot post-COVID. It used to be everyone coming from the suburbs, coming into downtown and the, um, I think the busier stops, um, are out there. Um, the, like the Walmart that between Vista and, um, Wells Fargo campus are some of the busiest destinations for folks. So people that are going to work out at Walmart are out in the Jordan Creek area and are coming from, um, the downtown, I would say, um, you know, in between Sixty-third Street and maybe like the where thirty-five turns north or two thirty-five turns north is where a majority of the traffic is coming from. Um, but it's, it certainly shifted a lot, um, since COVID.
Yeah, and I think you have more people in the core area going out west and then going to the east side and to go work.
Near north side as well?
Yeah. So if you look down where, uh, Emin is, that line is one that we've most recently added because of the factory work that's down there in that area. Um, and so getting people to places like that. Right, because we're looking at a few different places where shift work is important than getting people to those jobs.
Now, once Valley West Mall does its whatever it's going to do.
Uh-huh.
Is that, um, I, I mean, it looks like we, we still do a lot of going to them. Do we, if that turns into something different, then what would be, would we keep this? I mean, I'm just afraid like Valley West will not turn into anything and then we're, I, cause I mean, I, I realize that there's like a target there and Hy-Vee there, but.
Right.
I, I think right now it's like a time checkpoint where sometimes there'll be a bus parked there for a few minutes because they're all like ahead of schedule and they're too far ahead of schedule. I, I would imagine, um, that they'll, there'll continue to be service if it moves out of that parking lot into, um, you know, someplace else in there. Um, I, I don't, I don't think that would be a huge change, um, in the service, especially because, um, our line in the ridership concept, you know, three goes all the way out, right? So it'd just be a checkpoint. In the coverage concept, um, three kind of ends at, um, here at Walmart and then three A kind of makes a loop after that. And so, but that's not gonna be as frequent. So, um, I'm sure there'll be some change, but not like a major service change.
But that'll, since it's a thoroughfare, university and going west will still be going west and hooking down the Jordan Creek. So I think whether it's a stop at the mall or some other place in that area, you're still moving people in that direction.
Retail out there and a lot of housing.
Yeah.
Yeah. One thing with the ridership concept that I thought was really interesting too is that, um, in the ridership concept, you're getting more optional riders, people who have the, um,
perhaps have access to a car but are opting to take the bus versus in the coverage concept, your, um, optional ridership really decreases because of that longer wait time for the bus. Um, and so that is, um, a big factor. And I want to give a shout out to the consulting firm that, that helped with these concepts because they're very quick to say, we can't tell you which one's better. You have to decide which one better aligns to your values. Um, and that's what Joseph's vote is important for, so.
So what's?
I think just kind of looking at it, um, and reading here, the, I, the guy leaned towards the ridership concept. Um, I just think it's trying to reach as many people more frequently is good. I like, I, I, just knowing what I know about the route and the ridership and all of those sorts of things, I think it's, um, valuable options. Plus the, I think getting that every fifteen minutes, um, to has potential, like I think that has, but adding those types of lines has potential to build ridership.
Right, right. I know I can depend on-
Yes.
Every fifteen minutes, I can actually get somewhere.
Yeah.
When I listened on Zoom, I didn't really, it, it was kind of, you know, I didn't of course get to see everything like I, I wanted to. Um, but it was kind of a, a toss-up really. I thought both had some good concepts to it on, on either side of it. I wish you could take, like, just kind of combine it, but then that would blow the budget and then we wouldn't be sitting here talking about this. But I, if I had to pick one or the other, I would probably lean towards the ridership concept as well, just along the same lines of what Teresa said.
I think frequency is the big selling point.
It is. Yeah, I agree. I agree, okay. Um, yeah, and I think that the, I think the final plan is gonna put us somewhere in that continuum. I mean, I don't think we're gonna end on one end of the spectrum or the other, but knowing where each of our city stands is a good place to start the conversations amongst the, the group.
I like the idea that there's more red in ridership.
Yes, I think so too. I'm in.
The higher access point on the ridership concept, the average resident would be able to reach twenty-three percent more jobs in forty-five minutes compared to DART's existing network. And I think that's really compelling. There's a little bit of a, of a coverage loss, right, of how far somebody needs to walk to get to a bus stop. Um, but that footprint and how quickly they can get to work, um, I think is really meaningful.
Yep.
I just hope if, if there, you know, people are having to walk further or whatever, like there's more shelters that-
Yeah.
You could have them wait because, you know, timing may be off or whatever, and you'd hate to see people out in the elements.
Right.
Like, so.
Yeah, fair enough.
So.
But if, you know, if you drive down University and you see the number of stops that are like, you know, every block there, right? If you can eliminate some of those, so you have to go a block further, but you can get faster times. That'd be, yeah, but I, I agree with you. There should be some way to keep people out of the elements since we live in a place that has elements.
Um, unfortunately.
So the second part of the question is, do we want to start from a position of status quo in terms of budget or looking at a reduced budget amount?
What do you, what do you mean, reduce?
Yeah, could you? Could you?
What is our best?
What?
Well, in terms of talking about as a network, um, there's been discussion about, um, staying as is, or do we work with a smaller amount of money in terms of the overall? So it would be a, I, I can't find the email.
So, so I think from what I recall from the last meeting, it was like, if, let's say we did the ridership con, either concept, and then some of those fifteen minutes or better are gonna turn into thirties and some of the thirties turn into sixties with a reduced budget, depending on how much that, that budget reduction would be. Um, I've got the charts. I've got pictures of, uh, some slides. Hold please.
Are you talking about kind of how much we as a city would put in? Or we as all cities putting in?
Cities would, yeah, in terms of what type of budget we're, we're allowing the DART staff to work with. And so.
Well, I think the challenge with that question in and of itself is that the cost of everything is continuously rising. We're just in, we're at that point, we, we're in a flux right now just in our everyday lives and, and our economy in our state. And so I think that's a really hard thing to say, you know, do more with less. Um, I mean, we do it every day because we have to, right? But then you're, the point is, you know, then something is compromised and it sounds like time on this or the number of routes or something along those lines. And so, you know, I, one of the, I tell my kids, I guess, you know, give me, or give me a good, better, best, right? Like, so this is would be a reduced budget. Here's your savings and here's your increased cost or whatever, right? And so, um, I, I think probably the bigger question is, and it's really hard to answer this question at this point in time, is what, what is, what is the legislature going to do and how does that impact us? And-
I've got those conversations in terms of not wanting to make the final decision until at least we know what happens this session.
Mm-hmm.
Um, so, yeah, keep going though.
Yeah, so I, I think that that makes, that's just the tricky part, right? Because I know just we're as local governments, we're just in a really tough place to have to try to figure out how to come up with more money. And, you know, we've seen, you know, some of the things that are always the first to go, whether you're talking about a school or a community is arts and culture and all of those sorts of things. And then we've, we saw Medicaid, transportation was one of the first to go. And so it's, those are the extras that it's like people have to figure out how to manage or do on their own. Um, so I just, ideally, you know, if they could, if we could work with the current budget, that would be nice, but we may have to be forced to do more with less.
So, and I think that's what I'm looking for is philosophically, I believe that if we work with a, if we start out saying we're gonna work with a smaller budget, we're already medically saying we're gonna give less. And what's the point of doing this if we're gonna start with saying we're gonna have less service and less options for people?
I think it's important to provide transportation and I think our businesses in our community need the, the people that take the buses to work for them, to buy things there, you know? And so I, I think it's important that we basically stand up for those businesses and residents that rely on this transportation, um, and either say, you know, it's status quo, this is what, we're gonna abide by what we said and we'll give that money and you know, maybe we have to look at reducing costs some other place in our city budget.
Mm-hmm.
Um, but I, I do think that it's important that we have this and that we, you know, help the, the residents and-
Absolutely.
Shoppers and employees.
Yeah, and I've told Amanda this, this is an economic development issue. Um, this is about people going to jobs, getting a paycheck, spending their money. And that transportation issue, while many of us perhaps don't ride the bus, doesn't mean that others are counting on it. And so the, then I guess the question would be, of these new routes or these new opportunities, why have, as in DART said, okay, this is what this is gonna cost to do.
What do you mean?
The ridership program. Um, you know, this is what we needed money to make this work.
Well, they, they will plan, they're going to plan within existing budget.
Sure.
So they, whatever the budget currently is, they would design either the coverage or the ridership within the current budget. So the question is, do we want to keep the current budget? Or do we want to have a twenty percent reduction? And look at something, they, they would design it within these-
Those parameters, right?
Within these parameters, but would have less routes, less frequency, something would give if we're going on a reduced budget.
Right.
Um, I, I found the slides. Could, um, Adam, would you be able to let me into the meeting and I can share the budget slide? No, that's okay.
I keep, uh, going.
Hmm.
Be good.
If I can find one. Here we go. So we are one of the few cities that are at our maximum levy and in our budget, as you guys know, for the last two years, both in the FY twenty-five and FY twenty-six budgets, we are paying an additional amount to, um, exceed that max levy. Um, some might say max levy plus and proud. Um, and, but there are some cities that, um, sorry.
My s- Would you be able to make that bigger?
I'm gonna try, sorry.
Those open tabs?
Maybe, that's just, that's also how my brain looks, okay? Um, hi, nope. I made a terrible mistake. I made bookmark toolbar. Okay, uh, can you see it any better now? So, okay, in the visual, this lists all the cities and then it lists what the levy was in twenty-two through current and then the annual cost for a two hundred thousand dollar home, um, in Windsor Heights, sorry. That's as full screen as I can make it. I'm sorry, Susan. Um, and there are, say again?
Ours isn't showing right now.
Oh, uh, I can, there you go. Okay. Um, so there are some cities that want to reassess how much, um, is going, cause the, we're limited to that one transit levy of ninety-five cents to cover everything. Unlike the city where we have levy option for projects, levy option for, um, our employee benefits, right? There's just the one levy option for the city, so. Can we keep going to the other?
And West Des Moines are the only two.
And Des Moines is as well.
Des Moines.
Yeah.
As you might recall.
Right. So this was the slide that the status quo maintains the, the current hours of service. So when we're looking at this, and so it's the hours of service. Um, and what's amazing to me is that a nine percent expense decrease would actually have a twenty to twenty-five percent service decrease.
Right.
So it's not fang for your buck of, you know, we save ten percent, we only have a ten percent service cut. And they've also forecasted this with, um, a pretty modest revenue growth for property tax values, um, and even below what they thought was safe to use at for estimates.
So again, I think going in and saying that we're pro reduced budget
Oh.
Just seems-
Reduced, yeah, no.
That'd be crazy, right?
Right.
Yeah, I'm at the status quo or-
Yeah, I mean, I actually said I wanted to make any more, but no one else is getting on board with me for more, but status quo, I think is where we should at least start the conversation.
Right. I think you'll be in the minority.
Yeah, for, for sure. We're gonna be in the minority.
But we're gonna stand tall.
Yeah, no, that's just what I'm hearing from other communities, that more are leaning towards a reduced budget.
Transit's party for us.
Which doesn't, which won't impact their city's budget, only the- Which doesn't, which won't impact their city's budget, only the property tax. Uh, only resident and business property tax. So, you know, if a city on here wanted to cut theirs, like this costs for, if, for a two hundred thousand dollar home in Windsor Heights, it's ninety dollars a year in property tax. And so I struggle with the, oh, we, you know, we're worried about the budget, we should cut our contributions to Dart. When a lot of the cities I feel like that are saying that aren't paying above their levy. It's the residents that are paying a relatively low amount for what we get, um, for our Dart network.
So I can't see that, Lauren. Give me West Des Moines or Urbandale.
So West Des Moines, uh, they're at their, they're gonna hit their max levy this next year, so they'll be paying an additional nineteen thousand dollars. So, but their homeowners pay the same as ours. If on a two hundred thousand dollar house, they would pay ninety dollars and twelve cents a year in property tax. When you said Urbandale, they, um, are below the max levy and they, the average two hundred thousand dollar home would be fifty-nine dollars and fifty-six cents a year towards Dart and property taxes.
Can you tell me who is the most expensive? Is it, is it Altoona?
Um, no, so ninety dollars and twelve cents would be the cap for any homeowner. And so it's, cause that's the ninety-five, yep, the ninety-five cent. Um, Des Moines, uh, has the larger obligation towards, but I did the math. Um, I couldn't find in my notes of the per resident and Windsor Heights, we pay the most per resident in our additional compared to um, Des Moines and soon to be West Des Moines.
Because of the population.
I wish it was put out to everybody that the homeowner would really only gain two dollars or five dollars or whatever back in money for property tax if this, I mean, for two or five dollars, I can't even really get it to Starbucks coffee, you know? I, I mean.
Sure, that, like, that was one of the things that Pleasant Hill, we heard when we, um, went to Pleasant Hill for their, um, meeting where they voted to leave Dart, is that it was to save money and it's going to save, again, on a two hundred thousand dollar home, fifty-eight dollars and fifty cents a year for Pleasant Hill residents. To not have access to Dart. I know, it's hard to tell what I think about all of this, but.
So Grimes has left and they have contracted, don't mean to go down a rabbit hole here, but.
You're going down a rabbit hole.
I know. But they've, another company.
Yes.
What do we know about that company?
We know quite a bit. But, yeah, we can send you some of them. That's exactly what I need from you all. Thank you very much. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Um, Lauren did not have to stand in front of you and cry, so that was great. Cause that was the next plan. That was part B. If you guys were not on the same page as us.
My note actually says, don't cry.
No, I, I really appreciate it and, uh, thanks for having our back. Thank you.
I know this has taken up a lot of your time and Lauren's time, so definitely appreciate you attending all of the meetings and the three, four, six hour meetings, whatever they have been.
It's a worthy cause.
So that we can get the, uh, little script notes or, you know, the, the summary of the meetings and feel like we are, are a part of this decision, even if we're, I mean, we are, but we don't have to attend the meetings, so.
I tell you what, it's great, it's also great to have Lauren there because it's a lot of information. So that's a lot of things that both of us have to remember, try to remember, and there's just a lot coming at us and negotiating with our friends from across the metro is also a part of that fun too, so. It's good to know that we're all on the same page and we can speak with authority to what our leadership wants for Dart. Thank you, Mr. Mear.
All right, six B, discuss code update project. AJ or Adam?
Adam's gonna kick us off, but you'll probably hear from several of us.
Not a public speaker, so.
His plan B is also to cry. No shame.
We appreciate that.
You're welcome.
We can do in for all the fleet vehicles? Is that how it works?
A man being emotional in front of a manly man really makes them uncomfortable and is a, it's a great negotiating.
Might have to use that.
But, yes. Right, so code update project, so, uh, beyond that preface, uh, not being a public speaker, I preface this by just saying that we're not deciding on anything tonight, so nothing is being finalized tonight. Cause obviously you guys just got sent out Tuesday or Thursday, so it's a lot. So, do you not feel like we're bringing this to you to finalize anything, to make any kind of final decisions? Kind of giving you an update where we're at on this, kind of get it in front of you so you can start digesting it, reviewing it, seeing the red lines that are happening, so you can get that feedback and understand kind of what we're bringing to you. So I just don't want anybody to be too anxious about making any decisions tonight because you don't have to. It's discussion and providing, just starting the feedback process with you. And so just kind of give like overview of where this started, began last year, uh, working with Simmer and Corey to do this full code update. So, and it's gonna be excluding the zoning code, so that's not in the scope of this project. Not to say if anything comes up that is related to the zoning code, we can't make those changes, but in the scope of the project, it's not really what we're looking at. And we obviously end of last year, pass a new full zone, zone code, so, and most of the ordinances we've done since we started this project doing the review and notice on the website, the ordinance are posted, so we can just codify everything all at once. Those are mainly zoning code ones too, so it's hopefully in a good spot, but I'm not gonna hold, hold my tongue to that, so. Um, so we're going through everything else except the zoning code, kind of, Simmer and Corey will send us a prompt for these first sixty chapters, broke it into the sixty chapters to make it so it's not overwhelming, so you're not looking at the whole code at it all at once. Start with the first half, move on the second half. Um, and a lot of those changes can be very small minor changes, so in there you'll see police officer or uh, peace officer, peace officer is going to police officer or changing Rochelle's title and they're a city treasurer. That's not how we operate, it's finance director. So making small changes like that, um, to larger changes, um, do apologize, it wasn't noted in the staff report, but part of it is pulling fees from the code of ordinances. So that way we don't have to pass an ordinance every time we wanna update some fees, cause there's a lot of fees that are tied put into the order, code of ordinance, so pulling those onto the fee schedule makes it easier for staff to adjust fees as needed during, when we do our annual update of the fee schedule. Um, and then they can be larger changes as well, which we'll kind of hit on here throughout. Um, first up here, we have a removal of jail time, uh, for most municipal ordinance violations. Uh, so this was something Pete brought up and is resulting from legislation that passed back in twenty seventeen, SF three seventy-four. Um, it would be requiring legal counsel be provided to, uh, people placing, facing offenses in the city. And then the city would have to provide, and correct me if I'm wrong, speak up at, and just a note, speak up at any time if you have questions, interrupt me, I'm okay with that. Um, so it would be on the city to provide those legal costs, so looking at a financial impact for the city, removing instances of jail time in the code. Um, and as Pete explained, it doesn't, uh, and this might be where you need to correct me a little bit, but it doesn't mean no one can go to jail from something that happens in the city, but it's, if it happens in the city, police will provide a, like a ticket with a fee. And it can evolve into jail time for that person, but it's not gonna be on the city and we won't be providing the cost for council. And then, so.
Remove imprisonment from all the city violations as you're, if you're found guilty of the city crime, it just removes imprisonment as part of that, I'd say punishment, but whatever the legal term for that would be. We just wanna have fines, not.
Perfect. All right, and the next area is gonna be planning zoning appointments. One that's impactful, a little bit smaller piece, but, um, this is allowing the mayor at discretion to appoint P and Z commissioners, uh, four year or five year term. Um, this is to make sure we stay within the, uh, requirement that no more than one third expire in any one year. And we have run into that. And just from staff looking at how this may have happened, uh, people may have left the planning zone commission of their own choice before their appointment was over, so it, then when a new person got appointed to that five year term, it just lined up. So right now we do have an imbalance, so this will allow for future correction of that imbalance. And then next there, we have the, uh, updating the fire code, so that's another large one. It's going from the twenty twelve fire code to the twenty twenty-one fire code. Um, so obviously a few years jumped there, but it's one that hasn't been updated in a while. Uh, Blake, our fire marshal, you all know, uh, he was unable to be here tonight. Uh, kids had a baseball game, so I told him that was more important to be with the children. Um, but so if he's willing to come back another time when his schedule is available to do a presentation on the new fire code, the twenty twenty-one fire code and go into more depth for you. Um, and I'm happy to take any questions now and forward, forward them to that, him so that we can start getting answers for you for any questions you may have, but that is where we're at in there. And just kind of a note there, he kind of mentioned it in his, uh, staff report that we would not be transitioning to twenty twenty-four. And that is because the consortium that we're a part of for the fire code, they're still reviewing the twenty twenty-four, um, based on, once again, the legislator, what they decide to do this year. Um, so they're holding off on that. Um, most likely that consortium will meet in the fall, winter and towards the end of the year to discuss metro cities getting to that twenty twenty-four. And that is something we'll stay on top of with Blake, so that way we're not gonna be falling behind again like this. So we'll stay up to the current code that the consortium advises with the rest of the metro going forward. All right, so nuisance enumerated chapter and chapter fifty-one, the junk junk vehicle chapter. Um, so this one is gonna be, see a lot more red line on these two chapters. Um, it's a lot of cleanup and, and a big thanks to, uh, Mayor Jones. Uh, based on a pretty in-depth review of other metro cities and their nuisance enumerated listed, list and coming up with recommendations. Uh, it's a lot of cleanup that is happening in there right now. Right, so it's taken a lot of those, uh, from that list and if they are somewhere else in the code, letting them live there essentially and not having it in two places and having duplicated efforts within the code. Um, just from experience, uh, again, you'll have to jog my memory again, Adam, we talked about it today. Um, there has been instances where we're looking in the code, I think it was around temporary signs or sign, sign size.
On off-premise signage, yeah.
Yes, and it was one of those pieces where it was in one spot of the code and then in another spot of the code, it said something different because in the past, they passed an ordinance to update it. But at the time when they were managing that code, they just saw it in that one section, but it was in another section as well, so. Then we had some conflicting language, so that is to hopefully kind of stop that from happening in the future. So part of it seen if, let's see here, so, uh, like billboards. That one is gonna be outlined in chapter one seventy-five oh four. So it's in case that ever updates, we only have to go to one seventy-five to update that. We don't have to think about the ordinance on one seventy-five plus its chapter. So that is part of that redlining cleaning up that's happening here. Um, nothing is, none of the nuisances are being taken away either. So when you're seeing that, just know none of those are being taken away. Um, they're just being cleaned up, so they're in one spot. Um, let's see here, um, one that we have noted here, the one thing, we have one that is looking to add. And, uh, we just wanna kind of get feedback, so proposing this question to y'all. Um, is invasive species, so particularly like tree of heaven is gonna be the big one. And right now in the nuisance enumerated is cottonwood trees. Um, so me and Adam were brainstorming this and kind of get a pulse check on how aggressive do you all wanna be with those invasive species? Feel free to chime in too, Adam, too.
Yeah, so currently nuisances, it's listed as you're not allowed to plant a cottonwood tree that would be inclusive of private property. Uh, the change that we're looking at, and we have not spoken with Aaron about this yet, so feel free to weigh in, is to update that to include cottonwood and tree of heaven, uh, but also add language uh, around keeping that type of tree on your property. Because what we see with cottonwood trees and the trees of heaven is that they proliferate aggressively onto your neighbor properties, uh, sort of everywhere. And so it's, those trees do not usually exist because somebody's intentionally planted them. They exist because they've just come about and somebody's been a little lax on maintaining it and they see a tree and they decide to leave it. And then when you cut one of these trees of heaven, uh, what it'll do is sprout out underground and shoot up about ten, fifteen more of those. And then your neighbors start getting them behind their fence line. It's, it's problematic. The county level deals with, uh, noxious weeds. We have a county weed commissioner uh, and they can enforce a list of about fifteen noxious weeds, but there's no language around invasive trees. And these are the two trees that I think cottonwood's been historically on there. Uh, we don't see that as much of a problem today, but the tree of heaven, uh, is one that we found an active program to try to remediate and so.
And it's not currently in the code as a nuisance either. This would, tree of heaven would be one that we'd add.
Yeah, sort of, so the minimum standard would be to add tree of heaven to the list of not plantable trees. Um, the more aggressive stance would be to add this as a nuisance and actually try to enforce removal of trees of heaven, which again, are all around the community, including on public property, because they're very hard to get rid of, uh, along our trail system. But we've been pretty aggressively going after them in the last year and a half, so.
And don't we have a program too that helps, isn't somebody, Brian, doesn't he come and like paint, for lack of a better term on the, I mean, there's.
Brian will go place the chemical on the bark, it's called basil barking, uh, it should kill the tree and stop any of the other, uh, saplings from popping up when it is killed.
Would the code be to like require people to participate or manage it themselves? Like, would, I guess, would we continue to help? As somebody who can only grow invasive species intentionally, apparently, uh, I, it was a big help that, uh, Brian came and took care of it on, on my property. Um, is that, would that program continue or is it just like, it's in the code, you gotta figure it out on your own?
Hard to say policy-wise what you wanna do going forward, but it is a pretty easy program to manage. Brian's had a high number of requests on that, you know, he'll apply the chemical, that should kill the tree. It will be up to the resident to deal with that dead tree. Um, so there's still some property and reliability and, uh, requirements on there. But as long as we maintain that program, it is a good way to get that tree from stopping to create those additional saplings, which is the real challenge is when, when somebody pulls those out, you just get ten more. It's like Medusa's heads, so.
I think in terms of, like, there's the optional, it sounds like, to say, hey, I need some help. I recognize I have a problem. But like any other nuisance, it's gonna be complaint driven, so it's probably gonna be neighbors calling and saying this cottonwood tree has snowed all over my yard and whatever, I now have saplings popping up, so it's.
That's how I discovered I had a problem was because, um, somebody from the city notified me.
You got a nasty gram from the city?
No, I got a, hey, did you know?
Yeah, which, which is also good call that too, is we do send those nasty grams. So we do try to work with residents, so we try to provide that option if we do have a program, provide those options too, so that they are aware that we don't jump straight into calling Aaron, be like, hey, can you take him to court? Like, we try to avoid that, so. Yes, if there is programs available, we try to work with the residents to make sure they do know that is available.
I think at bare minimum, it has to be on our, on our list of do not plant or, you know, the, that's the bare minimum. And then, um, I, I wouldn't be upset if it went on to our nuisance. And as long as we continue to have the program available or able to provide our residents with an alternative because i- it's not something that everybody is going to be able to do and, and take care of and.
I, I, one benefit I, I think that we should explore if, if adding it to our code is, um, compelling residents to give public works access to fenced in areas. is compelling residents to give public works access to fenced in areas. You know, if it's in the side yard or front yard, whatever, it's easy for them to access. But I know that Brian scheduled time that he could come to get in behind my fence for the one that grew back there. So I think I'm easy to work with and imagining if it's in our code, it would kind of force somebody to know.
I don't think we can do that in the code. We would have to be able to see it from a public space.
Yeah.
So whether that's from the street or the right of way.
Sure.
We do sometimes get notifications of nuisances in particular, which this would qualify as from neighboring properties. And so they'll give you kind of a clear line shot, but we still have to identify it from a public space.
I guess I wish even like a chain link fence, if somebody's got it and it's behind a fence.
If you can see it from the right ways, then you can see it from the right away.
Chain link fences, yeah, because back when I was doing code, yeah, there was someone that wasn't mowing their backyard. They had a chain link fence, so I could see from the street, snap a picture of it and it was very clearly over six inches, so.
So somebody has a chain link fence and they've got a locked gate. But public works would be able to, I guess, yeah, okay. I just didn't know if there's anything that putting it in the code would make it easier for Brian and public works to administer.
Cause then, yeah, cause are you talking more of like in the code allowing like staff just to go on to property? Cause then, yeah.
Yeah, no.
Yeah. Oh, no, I was not.
But just that, that's a resident. I guess you can't have it in the code make compel people to do the right thing, so.
As a city, we're in a position where we have to be able to prove that it's a public nuisance, not just a private nuisance. So that's why we get into what can we see from the public spaces.
And as far as other invasive species, do you feel like you want to keep it towards the specific list of cottonwood, tree of heaven? Or do you want us to explore being more aggressive? And like Adam mentioned, the weed commissioner and having a more fuller list. Kind of guessing.
Do you have to spell it out or can we just say anything that has been established as invasive species by so and so? Instead of having, by the county, instead of listing it out and wasting everybody's time and.
Yeah, which that was kind of what I was brainstorming. The kind of con we thought of for that is it's more, I don't know how to say this, so I'm just going to say words. More pressure on to staff for managing that list. So it goes from tree of heaven, cottonwood to adding on about 15, 20 more species of weeds or plants to keep an eye on, to have knowledge about. And then one thing to kind of think about is like if a neighbor, if it got into like a squabble, they're, they're going on to that list. Well, they have this and this, so it's kind of gets more on to staff, which I'm not saying, not trying to say.
Bring in Polk County then for help, are they able to come in and.
Polk County has authority over the noxious weeds that are on that state and county list. So I think other than engaging with them, I'm not sure that we have much of a role to play in that other than bringing them in. Is that, you're understanding that?
That's like, that's like thistle and bamboo, I'm trying to think of other things around that list. But you know, we frequently get into the argument with residents of are they wildflowers or are they noxious weeds? Because a lot of them look the same. And I think maybe to your point, it's tough for staff sometimes to identify. Is that thistle or is that whatever plant that looks a lot like thistle, but isn't as noxious?
I guess my expectation wouldn't be that you become a botanist or whatever they're called, you know, like, I mean, if, if we have to, if it gets to that point, maybe it's we call somebody in to, to kind of help us and guide us. And because that's a high expectation on our staff to know.
Yeah, which would be like something we could explore. And then it's also thinking about the financial impact of bringing in a vendor to do that as well. But it's something we can happily explore. Kind of go with the, right now I'll go with cottonwood tree of heaven on the list. And we can look into having something more expansive and provide that as like an option B for you.
Good.
Perfect.
Well, if Polk County covers it anyways.
Right.
I mean.
Yeah, and we can have more discussion with Polk County then too and see, see what that kind of partnership would look like. Let's see here. All right, so that was the big call out for that section. And then a couple of other points on nuisance enumerated. You're going to see like a section 50.08 in red line would be a new section. Which would is the rebuttal presumption. So kind of giving us, if you want to go down the route of being more aggressive with our code enforcement would kind of lay the land for that as an option to be more aggressive with it. And then like I said, chapter 51, it's a bit clean up on this one as well with junk or junk vehicles. This one, just from, I know from personal experience, when I was doing code enforcement to the junk vehicles, the current ordinance is very difficult to enforce. The, there's about, let's see, 14 different descriptions, characteristics of what a junk vehicle can be currently. And a lot of it involves information that staff could not readily get to. Like one is determining the Kelley Blue Book value. We can't do that without a van mileage. So it's something we would need partnership with the resident to do, which is sometimes hard to do, especially with their vehicles. So it's kind of cleaning up, simplifying that list to make it more easier for staff to enforce. Also, the big one is taking the, so right now listed in there, any vehicle or partially dismantled vehicle on private property outside an enclosed building that's not operated on a public right of way within the previous 180 days or more is one of the characteristics. And that is a very lengthy amount of time and makes it very hard for staff to know has that carbon on the roadway within 180 days. So it's shortening that timeframe down to 30 days, which is a lot more manageable for staff to kind of identify that. So that is, and just from when I was doing code enforcement, I know that was, that was a pain point for residents too. When I had to tell them this, what the code is, so makes it hard. So it's though that language change is going to be very helpful for staff to enforce that junk vehicle. All right, so next section is noise control.
I think I'm going to kick this one off here.
Okay.
So Pete, feel free to jump up too, because there'll be some for us instances to you. But this one is a complete overhaul proposed. Right now it's a very lengthy chapter. It's got some duplication in it. Staff looked at code kind of around the metro. I did give you a handout here, just comparing some maximum noise levels from some of our peer communities. What we're proposing is moving towards what we've seen in Waukees, Clive and a couple of other communities as far as actually having hard, fast limits with the decimal reader for each zoning code classification. And moving away from a 60 day variance process for instances where you want to exceed that to a process that would be either administratively handled by staff or if denied by staff, taken at, taken up at the next city council meeting. Or if the hours being requested extend beyond 10:00 PM, also go in front of city council. So there's a lot to this section, but some of the key points here is that the proposed decimal level maximums in a residential district would be 65 DBA, which is the most common way to read the decimal meter. But there's also DBC, which is going to be more applicable to bass sounds or music. So we have them both listed in there because depending, depending on the type of noise, you'll want to look at both of those. And then at the nighttime, that would lower down to 55 and 60. In commercial areas, you get 70 to 75. Industrial, which we have very little, 70 to 80. And then I just note that Colby Park is in a residentially zoned area. So the residential sound limits would also be applicable there. We don't have a lot of permits that come through. We do have a couple of bars that request permits. We have our own events, Fall Festival, which has music. We have Nights in the Heights. There is a clause in the proposed section that city council has discretion to determine specific events or noises are just generally acceptable. This is language that occurs in some of our peer communities as well, just sort of gives you some discretion given that there's a lot of ways to make noise. A lot of different situations have different justifications. But our thought is we already reviewed the special events list annually. We'd probably add the Nights in the Heights events to that list. And that would be the city council sort of sign off on an annual basis for those events happening at Colby Park. All other events that would be making noise beyond the requirements would have to go through that permitting process, which gives them five to 10 additional decimal louder noises permits in there. And if they want to go beyond that time threshold, which either those noise limits decrease or have to cease typically 10:00 PM, then that would be a request that have to come to city council.
Most of our events are done before 10:00 PM when everything would be raised or would be lowered, correct?
And I'm not aware of any complaints that we typically get from Fall Festival or Nights in the Heights. I think those are pretty well beloved events. I think the complaints typically come from a private entity making noise. So I don't, I don't envision a lot of challenges on that, but this does give the police a little bit easier route of reading the sound at the property barrier. So typically right at the residential line of where the noise is being received, which is pretty common across the metro, using that decimal reader to determine whether they're exceeding that threshold on either the DBA or the DBC and then react accordingly on that. There are a couple of other pieces in here. There's a couple exemptions. So as is currently, city construction projects are exempt from the noise ordinance as are contractors for the city or contractors for public utilities. That exemption would continue to exist. We typically identify working hours for our contractors when they're working on a road project. There are exceptions to those, such as when they need to cut concrete, timing with it to go to drying. But those would continue to be outlined on a per project basis. Public Works is own projects. They have their working hours. They'll be familiar with what's allowed and what is not. And then the other pieces you run into are typically chainsaws, mowing.
So they kind of piecemeal their noise ordinance over, over 10, 15 years. That ordinance that you're looking at is their brand new January issued ordinance that we kind of clean, or Adam, AJ cleaned up a little bit. We just need some direction on what you think is allowable if I'm a business and get a permit. And what, what you think would be, I don't know, consistent with what other cities are doing. Some cities, Aaron, if you, and I know you work with some cities, but your cities either go with the disorderly conduct route, which there's no decimal meters, it's just what you think is a noise ordinance and you have to be a witness and you have to testify in court that you were, I'd say a victim of a noise crime, but that's how most, some cities, Urbandale does it like that. Clear Lake did it like that. Some cities go the, the decimal meter route where the police officer can say, like a per se law, like you're speeding 36, you know, in a 25, you're 75 in a 65 zone, right? So that lets the police officer be the, the actual enforcement person of the, of the noise ordinance. And Clive, West Des Moines, and I think Waukees do the, do the number, the DB route. So we think that this is a workable solution to take ours down to about nine, eight pages long. And it's actually, I think the officers were also a little, Chad, if you correct me if I'm wrong, I think the officer's got a little bit confused too, trying to enforce our current code, so. If you have any other, is that what you needed or?
I like it better doing it this way than trying to rely and then going to court on, because my, my interpretation is different than his, which is different. And so at least here, there's a, like this is a, in, in writing, you know, so that you can reference that back. And I think that's probably easier if we do end up having to go to court or justify. At least it's easier and we don't have the personal.
Or it's more of an objective standard.
Yes.
There's the complication too, though, because now you've got to calibrate the
Right.
noise decimal reader and make sure that that's working correctly. And so we see all sort of creative arguments as to why we shouldn't rely on that too. But our cities have it both ways.
We do calibrate or we do, we are keeping that up to date, by the way. We just got a brand new one too.
So the machine will be turned on, also designed to do a self calibration. So every single time you turn it on, you're getting that calibration.
That's great. Yeah, it should be more objective in that way.
Chief, how many calls do you get a year or in six months for a noise violation?
It depends on how it's coded into the calls for service to one. And two, noise could be a muffler in a car.
Yeah.
Noise could be someone working on their trees in their backyard at night or, or people just having a party in the backyard, you know? So it really, I mean, I doubt it, I don't think it's terribly that high. When I did the, when we were working on the annual report, I don't, didn't see a lot of noise. But the ones that we're dealing with are the amplified sound. But I don't even, we had one house that had a couple of times where they would have a stereo going in a car. A couple of times, I remember last year that we, we dealt with, but they, they were good about turning it down when we showed up, so.
Looks like we'll continue to go this route and take any other feedback you might have on specifics as we move along.
Thank you, chief.
So next section is going to be the community cats and trapping. And just a note on this, you will see on the next agenda, agenda item is to discuss the TNR program. So there will be more expanded, but we just wanted to make sure we focus on the code and then any discussion for the program to be its own separate item, so.
We do have Steve with the ARL patiently waiting to answer any questions on the ARL side, once we get there as well, so. So as far as how the code goes here, right now you're not permitted to live trap or kill any animals with the exception of rodents, which you can use a water trap. We're not talking about substantially changing that code aspect of it. We're talking about allowing one additional type of trapping, which would be the trapping of feral cats for the, for the intended purpose of participating in a TNR program. We're talking about allowing one additional type of trapping, which would be the trapping of feral cats for the, for the intended purpose of participating in a T N R program. And we'll talk about that a little bit more detail, but that would include the resident scheduling of veterinary appointments uh with a city partner. Uh transporting that cat to and from that appointment from the veterinarian and paying what is currently a $60 fee uh to neuter, uh spay, vaccinate, microchip, and clip the ear of that cat, which would then be returned by the resident to that neighborhood, assuming that it's deemed healthy. Uh so for this purpose conversation, just wanted to give that quick outline and then note, we still would not be allowing any other trapping as the code is a lot, uh as written. So if you've got a raccoon or opossum in your backyard, uh you're still not allowed to trap that. You can try to discourage it from living in your yard underneath your deck by, you know, trying to reduce whatever living space it's in there. But if you trapped something unintentionally, such as a raccoon, dog, whatever, you would have to be checking your trap every 12 hours while you have that actively set and then release that animal uh at the place that that trap is set. You get into some jurisdictional challenges of having people take raccoons someplace else uh outside of city limits, which isn't particularly legal either, and dropping them off in another city or in the county. Uh so that's the challenge we face if you're interested in doing additional trapping. But uh, but that's why it's written as it is.
Johnston to drop off stray animals.
Well, it's like hell, actually.
I've got one or maybe two of it underneath my deck, so.
Lots of squinnies.
Let it outside.
Any feedback on that beyond the trap and release program that we'll talk about?
Cool. Alright, so next section is gonna be the explosives fireworks section. Uh preface this section by, it's what's proposed. Uh Blake has reviewed this, signed off on it. Um but once again, uh depends what legislator does uh around fireworks, so wording in this can change. So um but like I said, Blake has reviewed the, reviewed these amendments aimed to like modernize, strengthen the city's regulations on the sale, use and enforcement of fireworks. Um but as just said, that could be going away. Uh such as we still have the ban within city limits carrying over onto this new one, but as we all know, that could go away. So that is where the fireworks section is. I won't spend too much time on that just because it's pretty fluid. It's what we're reckon, it's the current recommendation, but it's most likely to change depending on how the legis- legislator goes. So we'll, yes, go ahead, yes.
One, so lowering the insurance thresholds of the permit, can you explain that? Like, does that mean if your insurance, if they used to have to have a hundred thousand, now they only have to have 50,000? Or am I reading this incorrectly? Am I not thinking?
No, that is correct. That was.
Is there a reason that we wouldn't lower the threshold, the insurance threshold?
And I for, I didn't think to pull that information. Do you have that? Um I have to look at my emails for that answer. I do have it, but I'll have to follow up with that.
It looks, just reading through this again, it looks like maybe it's because you're, we're also going to mandate certification of whoever's shooting those off from the Pyrotechnics Guild.
Yes.
Maybe ring a bell or I haven't been too gauged this one, so I'm not sure.
No, that does not ring a bell in my brain. Um no, I will have to pull that information. I'll have that. I'll send that out in email tomorrow because I do have that in my email.
And then the next one, um the next question that I have, it, the next paragraph, ordinance also introduces a new enforcement tool authorizing the code official to seize and dispose of illegal fireworks. I'm just questioning, so let's say it's Saturday night at 10 P M. Why would it be the code official who's not working then? Why would it not be the code official or uh like the police? Or the, yeah, I mean, that just doesn't make sense. That was just a question that I had there.
That makes sense. Let's see, what section was that?
So that was right, it's page 93. Uh the, it says permit requirements and then the next paragraph down, the ordinance also introduces.
Okay.
I can send that to you. I can write it out for you so you know.
Yeah, I was playing this game earlier of taking vouch.
I have it.
What section is this?
I have it written out, like I have it outlined, so I can find it easy and send it to you.
Perfect.
The, I can throw you under the bus, chief. I threw the police department under the bus. Let's just be.
No, that's, that's, yeah, that makes sense. So that's easy tweak to make. Anything else on the fireworks? Perfect. Oh, where did my sheet go? Here it is. Okay. Um, next section, uh so chapter 60, um we are uh removing, cleaning up, uh removing the A T A, A T E section from there. Yeah, since we won't be able to do A T E in the future, so taking it out of there to clean it up.
Seen that one from start to finish. Some of you.
And fireworks.
Oh, the memories.
The fireworks pretty much together.
So that will be removed. Um on street parking and feel free to jump into P. So overall, James, for on-street parking, I'm gonna reflect an effort to better codify enforcement roles, improve public notification procedures, procedures and ensure consistent compliance with posted parking regulations throughout Windsor Heights. Um, is there any specific callouts that you had from that?
Yeah, just if you look, there, there is just a little bit of fine changes there too. We were, when we worked with um M C, M C O I, M I. M C O A, they talked about Davenport had a really good, clean parking ordinance and the fine schedules that will allow us to, um if it's over so many days that we can actually send it into um M C O A because it will meet that minimum threshold. Where right now it does not. Um so, and again, we just wanted to clean up the parking code. It kind of was piecemealed together, but we kind of cleaned it up a little bit and uh gave us a little bit better flexibility with it, so.
Perfect. And then following that is the snow ordinance uh section. Uh so are we coming back up? Okay. Um so this is gonna be uh revising that language pretty significantly. Um it's gonna, right now, we may have to step up sooner. Uh right now, it's, once snow starts, you have 24 hours and it's pretty much set on the snowfall. This is gonna be changing it to match other metro cities where I think it's like City Des Moines, uh where they police chief, public works director, they'll call for a snow ordinance, no ordinance, is that the right word?
Yeah.
I'm stumbling.
Emergency.
Yeah, though, though, there's an official that's specified in the code that is, and again, there are several people that we identified. So it wouldn't just fall to one person um that could put the ordinance into effect without snow being on the ground. So usually for us, snow happens at two in the morning, so it's hard to put it into, into effect when everyone's in bed. So we'd like to be able to be consistent with West Des Moines, Des Moines. So uh an official can say it's, it's in effect. And it'll be, and then again, there's some time limits to that. So there's actually some objectionable language in there instead of subjective, snow falling and, and the, and the operation has begun. So um we kind of did that, so we were able to start doing that better and making sure that the cars kick out the street earlier instead of trying to have them wake up at 10 to go on and do that, so.
Is that usually just the police and, and public works director? Or is it like the mayor or city administrator could also do this and go ordinance, put that into effect? It, I didn't read through that. I'm just looking at the notes. I apologize.
No, you're okay. Uh it's gonna be public works director, police chief are the respective designees. Yep. Alright, perfect. So that covers big changes. And so kind of going into next steps is.
Stop before you.
Yes, go ahead.
My next question, so I'm reading the updated section um before your next steps, that paragraph. So it says that um not only police officers, but code enforcement officials and public works employees were authorized to issue citations and have vehicles removed. So.
Yes.
We're, we're allowing public works to write tickets or, because that.
Potentially. Uh I don't know that that's going to be our common practice, but when we have staff members that are witnessing that, um and if we are having a recurring problem, then yes, they could be authorized to do that. But I don't, again, I don't know that that's going to be our standard protocol coming out of the gate on this. But yeah, if a snowplow driver is dodging a, in a car and we have an efficient process of providing a citation on that car, they could potentially stop the plow, drop it on the windshield.
Guess that makes me a little nervous. I'm not gonna lie. Just, is that legally, do, do other cities do that?
Parking enforcement point, well, just.
Right. Right.
The general practice for the city with the police department issues the parking tickets, the problem is, is that if we, if there's just one officer working and he or she gets taken out of the city to go, I, I, I hear from plow drivers all from 30 years of law enforcement, they're very frustrated when cars are parked on the street and they can't do anything about it. In the rare instance where we can have an officer available to do that, they could go out and issue some citations for, you know, if it's, I don't think the plow drivers are gonna get out of their plows after, you know, they don't want to stop their momentum. It just gives them the flexibility to do that in case we are not able to provide that service for them. But I don't, I can't imagine a, a time where we would not be available to do that. But again, we only have one officer working from certain hours at night. And if they're down at the hospital or jail, they're not here when the plows are really doing their, their main business, so. And again, just Nate is our code guy, you know, he has going out there marking tires. He could write 24 hour parking violations. You know, our code does allow some of that to happen under municipal infractions. This is just a civil $25 ticket or a snow ordinance ticket that anybody could write. So um West Des Moines, you know, gave them, gave them that ability and other cities are kind of following suit. I don't know how effective it is over there, but um it just allows us to have that ability to, to do that, so.
Thank you.
Yeah, and I can, I can reach out to them to get some stats or some more info, how, how it's gone for them for you.
I just didn't know that other cities, I mean, I'm all about making sure, I mean, I'm even all about towing vehicles if they continue to park. And I, you know, snow is gonna hit now, so.
Before we jump in the next steps, just, we'll just open it up. If you've been reading through all 277 pages, if you have other sections you want to talk about from in back to committee for further discussion. There is one that we caught um Friday. Uh it's chapter 40.01.07. Uh it's the public exposure chapter. It's not something that many cities have in their ordinance. Uh so that would be barring people or barring women from being topless uh or anybody from uh not wearing any bottoms. We're proposing to strike the topless portion of that at a minimum. Again, that wouldn't, it wouldn't prohibit the city from enforcing uh somebody that's urinating in public or having sex in public, uh but just uh being topless itself would not be illegal as it is not typically illegal in many cities. But welcome any feedback on that one. It's not shown in the red line, uh but as we were reading through it the other day, that was one we thought you might want to add.
Yeah, and just kind of piggyback off that is any feedback, any point, send it to me, uh reach out. Um usually pretty available, so if you want to come in, city hall, me, I just bought a bunch of $1 candy bags from Hy-Vee. So I've got sweet treats if you want to come in and talk code. Um so available to do that, but yeah. Otherwise, any feedbacks, shoot it my way. Uh take time, digest the red lines, adjust anything you've heard from residents too that is a pain point for them. Maybe it's something in the code and so that we can, this is our pro- good opportunity for us to get it cleaned up and kind of take that feedback and really do something with it right now at once.
Is that grow light thing, is that in the, because I know that we've had numerous issues with this going back and forth over the last year and a half, maybe even two years, but I admittedly did not go through all of this. So I don't know if that's in this first 60 chapters, but I, I would like to have that looked at if it is in the first 60.
Yeah, it's, I have to double check on that, but yes, I've got it noted down if it would be in a nuisance chapter or if it possibly be its own new chapter for light pollution or nuisance lights.
It shines into their house and so they haven't been, it just shines right into their house. And I mean, it's a pretty bright light, admittedly. So um there wasn't really nothing, it was a gray matter.
Yeah, because I think it was Norris. I think you were the one that took the house, you took picture. Oh, Nissen. Sorry, wrong N.
Well, there, there is a, a section about growing, like grow lights under 40 dot oh four dot oh three drug paraphernalia defined. But I have grow lights for my house plants.
I do too.
Not, not pointing into anybody else's yard, uh house, though.
Yeah, so yes, but you're correct. It's not something that's really covered, but in the code as a nuisance, something that the city can really step into and help take care of that light issue. So that would be, I've got noted down to look into where to get that into.
I would imagine that'd be the same as like if I had a floodlight that was pointed at my neighbor's window, right?
I think that's what went down the road. We
Yeah.
Really studied that.
Yeah.
They went deep into that. And I think they got Aaron involved too.
Yeah, and it was, it was, we just didn't have something that quite fit the situation. So, yes, got that noted down.
Thank you, Adam.
Yes, and then.
Thank you for not weeping.
He's not done yet.
That's still young. Uh next steps would include uh need to connect with Aaron to kind of discuss any kind of best way to do any kind of legal uh review on the red lines. Um and also just giving you guys adequate time to digest this as I just talked through. Um and then we'll be, should be getting soon from Simmer and Corey, the next set of prompts of questions to review the next part of the code and fingers crossed, salt, knock on wood, hopeful to get to a codification point in August. Um after, and it, that hope, that lines up with legislation too. So that way we can mix in any kind of changes from legislation into it and don't have to finish this up, codify this and then right away do a new ordinance for any new laws coming in. So that is the goal. And that's all I have for you.
Good.
Thanks, Adam.
You're welcome.
Starburst jelly beans and little mini.
I don't see any here.
No, it's to entice people to come.
Yeah, but we sat through this. Don't we get some reward? And we didn't make you cry.
I was like, that won't make me cry. There's the tears. No.
Well, I really appreciate this. One, I think that often code gets overlooked because it's overwhelming for folks. So I know this is a heavy lift. Um and it's kind of like we have our own little Windsor Heights Doge. Way to go.
Better. The better judge, better people, honest.
Are you, Adam's E O ten?
Um 6C, discuss T N R program.
All right, Steve, thanks for bearing with us. Uh Adam, if you want to unmute him if need be, but yeah, he can do himself. Alright, great. So just as a reminder, we're uh looking to update the code to allow for trapping of stray or feral cats with the intended purpose of participating in a trap neuter release program. Uh there was previously some discussion at Public Safety Committee on this, uh looked at some options. Nothing was recommended as far as action at the time. Uh staff had done some research and hadn't found an affordable option on it. To mayor's credit, uh he reconnected with the A R L, who's got some expanded capacity in the new facility. Uh and have presented some terms that are fantastic option for us, I think, to participate in the A R L program. Uh so a brief outline of that would be. So a brief outline of that would be the A R L providing the T N R veterinary services. The resident that wants to trap the stray cat will need to call the A R L and schedule an appointment so that they can go through the vaccination process, the neutering process, clip the ear and microchip it. The police have the ability to read microchips. And then, once that animal is trapped, the resident would transport it to the A R L on the south side of Des Moines there. They would complete all those procedures, do a health evaluation, presuming that the cat is healthy, which is the vast majority of those cats. Once treatment is completed, the resident would take that cat back after having paid the sixty dollar fee. And then release that cat back to the neighborhood. So that cat would still be a resident of the neighborhood. However, it would hopefully stop the additional cats from becoming neighborhood cats in that area. So there's a small commitment on the police department's part here of when an animal is trapped. Probably want to have that resident call the police to ensure that it is a stray cat, read the microchip, make sure it's not an adjoining property owner. And once that's confirmed, then the resident can transport it down to the A R L. And if the A R L does determine that a cat isn't sufficiently healthy, they would take on the responsibility of euthanizing the cat, or if that cat was adoptable for an unusual reason, they would potentially put that animal up for adoption. So that's sort of the terms that have been provided by us from the A R L. Steve, you have any comments, additions that you want to add to that? We put you to sleep?
Can you guys all hear me?
Yep, we can hear you.
Okay, perfect. Sorry about that. No, yeah, I think you handled very well. And again, we have a, we, we just increased our veterinarian staff by a couple of people down at the Des Moines Animal Services Building, so this additional capacity in the veterinary service allows us to partner with communities like you and appreciate you guys looking into this. This has been a a big program for us in Des Moines. We've had over four thousand cats go through a program in the last six years. It's made it easily turns fifteen, so it's making a difference and we think we can make a difference for you too in Windsor Heights.
And Steve, you, you guys do this in Des Moines. You said it's been very well received from the conversation we had a couple of weeks ago.
That's correct. Yeah, the ordinance was passed in Des Moines in twenty nineteen. And like I said, it's been about March of twenty nineteen, we've done four thousand cats.
Thanks. You were breaking up a little bit. Sorry if I made you repeat yourself.
No worries. Yeah. Pete, can you hear me okay now?
Yep.
Yeah, so we've done about, yeah, four thousand cats in the city of Des Moines since twenty nineteen.
So the agreement that would be signed between the A R L and the city would be in addition to the existing agreements. They do house any animals that are trapped, stray dogs of that nature. Those animals that are captured in Windsor Heights are transported by Polk County to the A R L. So there's some fees associated with that process, but as far as the trap neuter release program, that would be a no cost agreement to the city, other than providing some box traps that the A R L leases out to residents that want to participate in the T N R program. So the intention would be if council wants to move forward with this is to update the ordinance to allow for this type of trapping. Work with the A R L to draft that agreement and then pass it and begin implementing that program in the same timeline as completion of the ordinance process, so August or thereabouts of this year.
So how does this work with, you said you have to make an appointment now? I don't know if feral cats are going to abide when I, you know, tell them that they need to go into the trap and then, so how does that work? Do you have like a week or, I mean, I'm just trying to figure out how?
Yep. Steve, did you catch that question? How does the appointment system work given the uncertainty of when you might actually trap the cat? From my understanding, it's not a specific time. It's more of a heads up. We're expecting to have a cat to bring in and confirmation that they have room for that.
That's, that's correct. Once, once you have the cat, I'm sorry, my, my mute was going on and off. Once you have the cat in the trap, you can set that appointment with our trap neuter T N R coordinator. And then from there, you can basically bring the cat over to Des Moines Services within twenty-four hours and we'll have a span neuter, microchip, microchip and vaccinated.
And then we come back and pick them up in a day, two days, three days?
Same day, same day. So typically most of our T N R cats are dropped off anytime between seven and eight AM at our two different locations. And then by three, four, three, four o'clock in the afternoon, they're being picked up by the same resident that dropped it off.
Okay.
They don't have the, I think, Steve, you said that some places they have the, they want to keep the cat for an extended period of time, but they don't, they don't do that. It's the same day because it's so non-invasive, so.
That's exactly right. Yeah, we, our veterinarians can, can do quite a few span neuters in, in short amount of time. And then there's a recovery process that happens within our facility itself after it's, so most of the span neuters are done by mid morning and then just there's a recovery time for the animal. So that's why we, until about three, four o'clock in the afternoon for the community partner to pick it up.
Thank you.
You're welcome. And if there's, I'm sorry, I apologize for my mute button not working. Was there anything that you didn't hear from me? Was I breaking up pretty bad earlier?
I think we got it.
We got the gist of it.
Okay, thank you.
Looks like you're out trapping a cat.
I'm actually walking my two dogs with my wife.
Are there other questions or council supportive of this program?
Yes.
Okay, thank you, Steve.
This is great. Thank you so much. Everyone's at help.
Thank you.
All right. Six D, discuss Polk County Deer Task Force Urban Hunt.
All right, we've got Chad here today to give us an update. About a year ago, we reinstituted the Urban Deer Hunt Program and at that time we had restricted it to one property and I think council wanted us just to bring back the results and any interest or comments as far as how it went to determine what and how you want to proceed going forward. So Chad, if you want to give them the update? Yeah, please.
Do you have candy?
I have candy. I-
Goodness.
So as AJ was saying, yeah. I've been here for twelve plus years. I know that we had this program up and running a number of years ago. The last person that I specifically remember doing it, really the only person that I ever remember doing it was our previous public works director, Jason Van Osdale. He happened to be a neighbor of mine at the time, so I was able to kind of pick his brain a little bit about how this program went when we first started talking about reinstituting this program. Jason had told me that they had had some success and specifically the area where he was hunting at. So when we started looking at doing this program again, we had a particular resident that Jason had provided the name of and we made contact with her. She happens to live up in the area that we know has a pretty high deer population and tends to be the area that the police department is contacted about for the deers in the street or just deer crossing or really kind of the deer nuisance with them tearing up people's property. So we went back to her before the program started. She was willing to allow us to utilize her property again. She also happens to be the largest private property owner in the city, so she's got a significant chunk of land up in the northwest part of Windsor Heights. The problem with that is the vast majority of the land that she owns is actually not in the city of Windsor Heights. So she's a Windsor Heights resident. A portion of her property is in Windsor Heights, but the vast majority of her property is actually in the city of Clive. So that creates some challenges in and of itself because Clive does not allow any any hunting on private property in their city. So they've got some areas in their city, some Green and Bell areas that they allow this urban deer management program to be part of, but as far as private property, they don't allow it. So when we went back to her and started kind of trying to figure out what we could do, she does have an area of her land that falls within Windsor Heights. So that was kind of our primary focus. Some of you guys might know, I don't, sorry, I don't have slides or anything, so this is just kind of my stuff to look at. So if anybody has any questions as far as the deer management zones, the stuff that was previously approved by council back in twenty nineteen, I'm happy to share that with everybody and kind of show where the areas in the city are that are, the council at that time had approved to hunt. Looking at those areas, I have some reservations as far as if we were gonna, if we were gonna expand this program, which is I think why I'm here, correct? What we did when we decided that we wanted to reinstitute this program, since we only had one individual that has this area that really seemed to be the best place for us to hunt, was we wanted to pick who was hunting that property. Okay, we wanted to have a little bit of skin in the game as far as we just didn't want some random person running around the city of Windsor Heights with a bow and arrow, shooting deer. We also wanted to make sure that whoever we were choosing, and it was a partnership between the city and the landowner to hunt that area was going to be responsible, responsible. And so we reached out to a couple of the people from the police department that are avid hunters. We had a little bit of control over these people. If we were to instill them and let them hunt this property, we could basically make sure that, hey, these are the guidelines. We know that these people are going to follow these guidelines. And so that's the direction that we went. They ended up, the, the season runs, it's a little bit different than your typical bow season, so the urban hunt typically runs from the end of September through about mid-January. And this year, if anybody in here knows anything about hunting or hunts themselves, it was a pretty warm year. So the one hunter that we had up there, no, long story short, no deer were harvested from this particular property. So if you wanted to expand this, I would suggest we, I show you the map if you are already not familiar with it and we could kind of, I could show you where they're currently hunting and I would say that based off of the setbacks, right now you have to be a hundred feet from the trails and you have to be two hundred feet from any other building unless you get permission from that property owner as well. So if you wanted to look at those, my concern would just be that that trail is kind of an imaginary line. The houses that would be eligible based off of where the, the council had previously approved. I think that you're just gonna, we're gonna be asking for problems if we start allowing other people to hunt that particular area. The public spaces, I think we're going to run into the same thing. So my recommendation would just be to continue and hopefully partner with the same property owner and see if we can try to manage it with getting a deer or two out of there a year. Because I think long term, if we're able to get a deer or two a year up in that particular area over three or four years, we'll make it a significant impact. That would be my recommendation. So I apologize.
No candy.
I should, what's that?
No candy.
No candy. And I should have probably had some maps in case anybody's not familiar with it. It was kind of just a
We're up there.
Oh. Why didn't somebody say?
He just popped it up.
So yeah, I mean, if you look at this, like we have, so this is the property that we're talking about right here. Which is, she has a large section, but that would be the area that we actually had a hundred for this last year. Some of these other properties, I mean, I think in theory it's possible to, to do, but you know, I think we're just going to run into a lot of issues with, you know, up in that area with the school and with the trail, the pedestrians and stuff, when they start seeing people that are, you know, walking around with a bow and arrow or up in a deer stand. Most hunters are responsible as well. I'm a hunter myself, so I, I get it. But you're still going to run into issues with too when you harvest a deer, if you don't have control over that person, you know, what they end up leaving behind, which creates some issues. If you end up, if you actually wound a deer and the deer ends up going on to somebody else's property, so now we've got hunters that are treading through private property to try to claim this deer. I just, I, I think we're going to be opening ourselves up to some issues.
So just a, a couple other color commentary, I guess, is you know, we reinstituted this in part because we had a few residents reach out a year or two ago, just about, you know, the frequency of deer, particularly in the northwest area. We did post some information that the urban bow hunt was happening last year and we actually got quite a bit of feedback kind of against the urban deer hunt online. But we continue to hear occasionally from folks concerned about car accidents, hostas, deer ticks. Deer ticks is the most recent one I've heard about as well. So you've got people on both sides of the equation. I'm in agreement with Lieutenant that this is something that we can do and we can do it safely. We could probably expand it, but this is probably the safest route. And this is an issue that is regional. It's not going to be controlled by Windsor Heights. These deer are mobile. Even if you get one, another one's going to pop back in, probably in that area too, just because there's habitat available, so. Welcome any feedback.
T N R program.
I was gonna say.
One of the other things I didn't mention too was I pulled the the crash data for January, what do they do, January one twenty-four through December thirty-one twenty-four? And essentially with the area that I was looking at was Seventieth West to Seventy-third Hickman South to University. So that's, that's that corridor where we get the most complaints about the deer and having driven up and down those streets at all hours for, for many, many years, I understand there are a lot of deer that are up in that area. However, the crash data for those twelve months, we didn't have a single reported deer collision. So.
Most people that drive through that area know to be.
We know.
Yeah.
So I'm not saying they're not there. I'm just saying like, when you start looking at all of the other risk factors, you know, if we were having crash after crash after crash, but that's, there's just not the data to support that. So.
And Chad, one other note, you mentioned they do fly, Polk County flies a helicopter out to try to do accounts. Currently, we're not being assessed any fee for that, but at some point as a participant in the urban bow hunt, we may get some level of participation or have some sort of a fee applied to us to continue the program.
Yeah, so they do aerial surveys. I don't know how often they do them. I, I think that they only do those once a year, but what they do is there's twelve different task force jurisdictions that are part of the Polk County Task Force. And what they do is there's a little bit of debate as to how this is going to go, but they send the chopper up and or fixed wing, whatever aircraft that they're using. And they have to pay for the flight time and they have to pay for the fuel. And so they're trying to charge all of the different agencies. And right now the discussion is how to do that proportionately because Windsor Heights probably shouldn't be, they're not going to be spending as much time over Windsor Heights with our ginormic geographical areas. They might be in West Des Moines or Des Moines or over Polk County. So it doesn't really seem fair that you would just split the cost, you know, by twelve, everybody paying a twelfth of it. So there's a little bit of discussion on that right now. I haven't gotten correct. Yeah. I haven't gotten any numbers on what the cost is going to be yet, but I anticipate at some point there will be a cost that's associated with it.
I don't know.
So. They could probably do our survey, I would think, from maybe Urbendale or
Or just Windsor on the fourth story. I think we just look at and probably, yeah.
Yeah, there we go.
Okay. Do we need to take any action or? Bringing it to you right now, just in case you wanted to make any changes to the ordinance, we can roll that into the rest of our process, but you know, I think our recommendation is we, we keep things as is, and I'm not hearing anybody express otherwise, so.
Thank you, Chad. Nice presentation.
All right, reports. Miss Harms.
Yeah, so we had Matt.
we had Matt, um, a couple of weeks ago and, um, we mostly, we, we updated the bylaws and then mostly, uh, got to discuss legislative issues that are pending. I'm sure you've all heard there's a new property tax bill. Um, and so they're on version two point oh. I'm not sure what the fate of that is for this legislative session. The legislature is scheduled to adjourn on May second. I would tell you it's highly unlikely that that will happen. And I would say it's probably a fifty fifty right now on whether or not a, a, um, property tax bill passes. So, um, the fireworks bill did pass out of the Senate and, um, but it is sitting over in the House. Um, so I'm not sure what happens with that next. Um, your clerk bill passed, I believe. So yay. And, um, otherwise, most of the other, uh, bills that had like associated fees and stuff like that have kind of fallen by the wayside. So we're just waiting for budget targets right now. And once those are out, I think we'll, you'll see a hustle to, to get done and get out of there. But these warm temperatures are not going to have the farmers legislators very happy, um, because they are going to be getting in the field. So that'll be the next thing. So happy to answer any questions. Otherwise, that's all I got, I think.
Amber?
Um, I attended the Momentum Des Moines Dart Crawl, wonderful time with both the Joneses and other transit advocates, um, special events meeting, met with Des Moines Children's Museum and Susan today, um, to finalize stuff for Touch a Truck. That's about it. Oh, yeah. Oh, history account was great. Yes, thank you.
The, uh, second podcast for the city of Windsor Heights is done. Uh, featured Adam and, uh, Jason talking about Colby Park. It was a, a bit more sexy than what, uh, reconstruction of Seventy-third Street was. Um, did anybody get a chamber new resident packet?
Uh, they're still working on the inserts, so I don't think they've gone out yet, but Fletcher is going to bring us one, uh, either next meeting or.
Great.
He had something in his hand today, but I don't think it was that.
Yeah, I saw it. And on the twenty-eighth, Coffee with Council at, uh, Grounds for Celebration. That's all I have.
The drone, nothing for me.
Miss Scaries?
Um, I have been busy preparing for Earth Day. So a lot of things have gone by the wayside, uh, April twenty-sixth, from twelve PM to three PM, uh, down at Colby Park. We are joining forces with the Walnut Creek Watershed Festival. I finally have gotten it right, only fifty-two times of saying it. Anyways, um, we're getting together with them. Still need volunteers at Earth Day because, uh, one of our, um, sponsors is not going to be there to hand out the perennials. So that drops us down by one person. So if anybody is able to come out and join in the fun, even if it's for an hour, uh, I would greatly appreciate it.
What time, Susan?
Twelve PM to three PM. And then prior to that, from eleven thirty to, or from eight thirty to eleven thirty, there's the stream cleanup. We have probably ten residents that have volunteered for that. Maybe more.
Fourteen, fifteen, and then some plus.
So, yeah, I, I think there were some you sent today to some, but, um, then Andy was nice enough to take Friday, the twenty-fifth and kind of split that up between afternoon or morning and afternoon. So MetroNet and Mid-American could come out and do some of the stream cleanup. So, um, kind of working to see if we could get some pizza in for the, the folks that are doing stuff on Friday, not just Saturday. So, uh, other than that, still working on, uh, Touch a Truck and, uh, Movie in the Park starts up May second with Matilda. So, um, I think that's at seven forty-five starts the food and maybe eight fifteen starts the movie. We'll have, uh, I believe it's the Taco Truck that's at Seventy-third and at Sherwood Forest.
The Boris de Mexico.
Yes, that's it. And then I think, uh, an ice cream place that is coming, a new, um, new ice swar.
Scoops and spoons.
Yeah, that's it. Um, so.
Some things I pay attention.
So that's, uh, the important things. But, uh, so they're coming out. So excited to, to start this. That's it.
Andrew? Uh, just note, there's two reports in there, ones about the proposals that are going around the metro for the change in percentage of funding for Bravo and Catch DSM, down from two-sevenths to twenty-five percent. For both of those going forward, uh, there's been a few communities that have pulled out of both organizations or are still considering that. Uh, but I believe Ankeny is moving forward with that change to twenty-five percent this evening. And Urbendale and Des Moines are intending to do so, uh, in early May. So I don't know that we've had any conversation at the DIAS about either one of these two yet. We do contribute to both of these organizations typically between two to five thousand dollars per organization a year. Uh, so we're a fairly small piece of their funding pie, but if anybody has questions or wants to have further conversation about how this looks like for us going forward, assuming things continue on this trajectory, uh, we can get this on a discussion item on the agenda. We're happy to answer any questions you have right now.
Do we know what, if we went to twenty-five percent, that model, do we know where we would be as far as what we would be, I mean, would be still be the same, would be, the amount go up, down?
Uh, so our funding contribution would go down in both instances. There is a floor, uh, for contributions, uh, for non-hotel communities, which would include us. So our hotel motel money primarily comes from, uh, Airbnbs in town, of which we do have quite a few. Uh, but I believe the floor is twenty-five hundred for the C V B per the agreement we passed about a year and a half ago. Uh, and the floor, I believe on Bravo is fifteen hundred, if I'm recalling correctly. So I think we would stay above the floor in both of those instances, even with that decrease down to twenty-five percent. Uh, but, uh, it depends on what Airbnbs are doing for business. I know a couple have sold recently in town and we have the motel that, uh, when they have paid, won't be paying going forward as they move to an apartment. But I would anticipate we'll still probably be above those minimum thresholds. So it would be hotel motel money being spent on the organizations as opposed to general fund or lost.
Thank you.
Okay. Adam A, closed session per Iowa Code twenty-one, five, one, C to discuss strategy with council and matters that are presently in litigation or where litigation is imminent, where its disclosure would likely prejudice or disadvantage the position of the governmental body and that, and that litigation. Is there a motion?
Second.
Roll call.
It's scary.
Yes.
Yes. Lauren Campbell.
Yes. Yes.